We'd like to call this meeting to order and of course, welcome everybody here in chambers, all those who might be participating via Zoom and of course, via the Internet, watching our, our Kingman YouTube channel. Once again, we appreciate you being here. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council of the City of Kingman, Arizona, held on Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. We'd like to turn some time over to our City Clerk, Annie Meredith for Roll Call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson is traveling this evening and may try to join us remotely. She is not with us at this time. Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
And Councilmember Walker is excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Dennis Cronkite of the College Park Community Church. I would ask all of us to stand and afterwards, we would have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our great God and Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the privilege that is ours to come to you seeking for wisdom and help as we need it daily for everything we do, but particularly at times when we make decisions and we face different things that are in front of us that are important and affect other lives. So Father, we want to, we want to thank you for our mayor, for the council members who serve, and we pray, Father, you would give them wisdom as they make decisions that affect our lives and we ask for your favor upon them. And then Father, we want to ask for your wisdom in regard to this meeting tonight, that it would be a blessing to our community. It would be a meeting that has in regard to the decisions that are made, the, the will of God, the principles that your word dictates for us to follow that will bless us and bless the lives of others. So we ask for that and we pray, Father, this will be a great meeting, a positive meeting, a meeting in which people respect one another and yet are able to share their views. So we give these moments to you and we ask it all in the name of Christ our Savior. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A.3 to discuss any agenda item, the, any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First, we have appointments and 1A Vice Mayor Appointment. Staff was directed to place this item on the agenda for discussion and action. Position of Vice Mayor is open at this time. Per the city code, the council may appoint a Vice Mayor in December after a general election or when a vacancy occurs. In this case, there is a vacancy prior to the general election. Counsel, discussion, and possible action. Okay, counsel, starting right off.
I'll start if you want me to.
I'll look at all of you. Councilwoman Samley.
I just want to consider how many meetings we have left. You know, we do have on our agenda to possibly cancel the third meeting or the second meeting this later this month. So with that being said, if we do cancel, we only have four meetings. And so I, I am more in favor of appointing a council member because we are short, but I, I really could go either way on a Vice Mayor just because we have very little counts of meetings and we are going to elect a Vice Mayor, the first meeting in December. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mello.
I, I agree with Councilwoman Samley. I, I did feel strongly about having a Vice Mayor, but after we had executive session and given it some thought, I think we only, we do, how many council meetings do we have left? Four?
Four.
Yeah, so that would be kind of, so I'm, I'm in favor of foregoing a Vice Mayor until next year.
Okay. Yes, Jamie.
Okay, I'll go. I, I think on a, on a different note is I, because there's only four of us here tonight and we're missing a couple of members right off the bat, I was a little bit nervous about the four of us making such an important decision, even if it is only for four, four more meetings. So I could go either way, but I think that's something to consider as well, that we don't have a semi-full council tonight.
I think that's important. We're missing two and something so important like this, I think we should, if we, if nothing else, we should wait, but on the same token too, balancing the fact that we only have four meetings left before the new council will be sworn in, yeah, I am, I'm, I'm thinking that we should just maybe push it off until December.
I'll just wrap you in bubble wrap.
Well, keeping in mind too, you can appoint whomever you want to go to different functions, represent the city.
Correct.
So it's not like if you're not available, the city's not going to be represented. So just for the public's notice, I'd like to make that comment.
And we have been doing that and council members have been very gracious in accepting that, that, those assignments. So I appreciate all their help in doing that. So I would, I think we would entertain a motion then that we probably delay this until our first council meeting in December.
So we're delaying it until, or we're just not going to have a Vice Mayor until next year? Is that what you mean?
No, until December.
When they get sworn in.
Because the new council will be sworn in the first meeting in December.
With the new council members, yeah. I will make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Number two, awards recognition. I like these, this is some of the most fun part of our city council meetings is recognition and recognizing some of the great things that are happening in our community. First, we have proclamation of National Literacy Month and I will read that here first. Proclamation, whereas literacy is the single most effective way to promote global prosperity and eliminate poverty, and cultures that are literate embrace the key lever of change for economic development, social growth, and environmental, environmental protection, and cultures best promote and support democracy, political stability, and peace based on many factors, but rely on as a pivotal factor, literacy. An assurance of literacy for all citizens best promotes peace, human rights, environmental protection, and prosperity. And literacy brings improved self-confidence to the individual, a heightened sense of belonging, and improvement, and improved job opportunities. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Kingman, Arizona, am due hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as National Literacy Month, and further declare September 8th, 2022 as International Literacy Day. I strongly encourage each of us to recognize the contributions made by our local literacy program, KALP, Kingman Area Literacy Program, and other literacy and adult education programs in Mojave County for significant contributions they have made and continue to make in our community. And I have so, I have so signed it. And we have representatives, KALP, here today and I have, that Ms. Roper is going to be our representative. Would you like to say anything to counsel about this and those who are present?
I didn't prepare anything, so I apologize, but I do want to let everyone know that we give 100% free tutoring for adults and children in the Kingman area. We are 100% volunteer run and we're very excited that you're honoring National Literacy Month, so thank you. And if you have time, we'd love a photo.
I think liter, reading is so important and literacy is, is all wrapped up into that. I didn't do a very good job in English and when I was in high school, but you know, that's a whole nother thing. I did not like composition, but, and that all wraps into it. But we will come down as a council and we'd like to get some pictures and we'll present this to you.
Thank you. Bye. My phone's over that way.
You'll, you'll position us, Annie?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't see. There you go. There you go. Pop into a window. All right, perfect. All right, everybody look at me.
Okay, next we have item B, Kingman Fire Department, CFI, A, Accreditation Recognition. And first, we will turn some time over to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, it is a pleasure to be able to talk to you about this award. The Fire Department, over, a little over five years ago, made a commitment to be the best of the best. And as part of that commitment, they signed up to participate in the accreditation program. And so it was my pleasure to accompany our representatives to their hearing and to be able to speak in favor and support of their accreditation. And so it's, it really brings great respect to this community and to the Fire Department for the service that they're providing. This commitment for accreditation really means that they're, that they have agreed to follow best practices in pretty much everything that they do. And in part of that is tracking their activities, performance measurements, all the things that speak to great leadership and great service. And so just, I want to congratulate the team before we invite Chief Jaeger up to talk about the program, the leadership of the Fire Department, their commitment to be re-accredited. So this program, you have the pleasure of being accredited and then you have the pleasure of going through the process of being re-accredited. So this is our second go-around and we've came through with flying colors. With that, I want to congratulate Chief Jaeger and his team and invite him to the microphone.
Welcome, Chief Jaeger.
Mayor, councilmembers, thanks for giving us a few moments of your time tonight. This is very important for us. We're extremely excited. This is a long process that takes our whole team, not just the Fire Department team, it also takes the city team as well. During our hearings, the site visits, the peer team come out, they interview not just our department, but every division within the city to make sure that we have good working relationships and that, that we're following best, best practices. So again, I'd like to thank City Manager Foggan for, for going to the hearings with us, that it's very stressful time with 11 assessors questioning you on all your programs and, and how you manage them and all the data. So we, we were proud to say that we successfully got 100% approval from that hearing committee to move forward. Our first go-around, we got three no votes, so we've, we've improved. As well, they've added some new sections onto us that we had to, to write to and be prepared for, so we're extremely happy. This administration was tasked with this in December when Manager Foggan put me in this position and we were all new at it, so there was a little bit of nerves involved. So just for an example of how important this is, we received our accreditation status from the Commission of Fire Accreditation. There's only 300 agencies worldwide that achieve this, this goal. And so, and then numbers in Arizona, there's only 13 fire departments that have accredited status. When we first did it originally, we were one of, I think, three. So you can see the numbers, more people are doing it. We believe we're setting a good example for some of the departments. We do get phone calls all the time on how do you guys do this and, and how, how do you make it work? So we are happy with this as far as accreditation. This also ties in with our ISO. We're one of 70 agencies in the world that have accreditation and ISO 1 status, so we are extremely proud of, of that status. So I would like to recognize our, the main team that, that worked on the, the project itself. Again, this starts at the firefighter and goes all the way up, but these individuals truly spent every day working on this process to move forward. If I could have them stand, Assistant Chief Mike Stapleton, Assistant Chief Tom Flanagan, and Deanna McLeod, our telecommunications supervisor, she was also our accreditation manager, so she's the one that kept us in line to make sure we follow the process. So again, we would love to have a picture with you. We're, we're extremely excited and, and again, this lets the community know that we truly do what we say we do, to try and be the best organization that we can for our citizens. Any questions?
We like pictures.
Did you have any questions for us?
Any questions for Chief? Yes, go ahead.
I just want to thank you all for this. Just makes me so proud, you know, to be a, a citizen of Kingman and a part of the city. Thank you for all your hard work. We, we really appreciate it. It's not just coming to save us when we need help, but you guys are really the best of the best. Thank you so much for your dedication.
Okay. Let's go to picture. Thanks.
Sorry. Yeah. It was the best. Perfect. Everybody cozy. Like angle in.
Please sit.
All right, everybody.
Congratulations. Thanks for all the nice.
Congratulations. Good job. Thanks.
You know, Chief, we are very proud of our Fire Department and just want you to know that we truly support you. And how impressive that, that in the, what, the first year of doing this, you, you, we are one of three in the whole state. What a great example that we're setting. So appreciate it and keep up the good work. Item number three on our agenda called to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted, restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Clerk Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor. We did not receive anybody that wished to join us via Zoom this evening and no written comments were received ahead of time. We do have three individuals in chambers this evening that have signed up to speak and some handouts have been provided ahead of time for you for their items.
Okay, thank you. First, Mr. Paul Amen, we turn some time over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's actually pronounced Ayman.
Oh, Ayman?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
And I live just down the street here, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to appear before you. I just have a really brief.
I have a really brief recording of a 911 call that I need to play for all of you.
Okay. I'm, I'm Spring Street and Third Street and some guy's dogs just attacked some lady.
Okay, what's the address of your emergency?
I'm trying to find the address. I, I'm like literally across the street from the St. Mary's. Watched some lady get attacked by a dog. Okay, so this guy was talking in front of the St. Mary's church, talking to some lady inside, having a little thing, he had three dogs and a lady came walking down with her dog and the dogs just lunged and went after her and her dog.
Okay, does he have any medical attention?
I'm not positive. Lady is still on the ground though.
Okay, where exactly did this happen?
This happened on Third and Spring Street. She's in front of the St. Mary's church.
Okay, is she awake?
She's awake. She said not, but um, she's still on the ground. I think she got bit by one of the dogs.
Okay, where's, where's the dog now?
The guy's holding all three dogs.
Okay, so are the dogs contained?
The lady's dogs are now.
Okay, hold on, hold on, I'm getting, I'm getting help started, don't hang up.
She's standing underneath a tree with two gentlemen.
Okay, no, I mean the one with the aggressive dog. Where is the aggressive dog right now?
The guy is going back to the front door of the St. Mary's Center.
Okay. And he still has them contained, is that right?
Yes, he still has them contained, saying now they're not aggressive, that he has them on the leash.
Okay, so the other person, the person that was attacked, is she still on the ground?
No, she's standing, like she's standing on the bench now.
Okay, are you able to ask her if she needs medical attention?
Um, I'm not over there, walking right over there. Cause I have like seven minutes before I gotta catch the bus.
I'm sorry, you have what?
I have a few minutes before I gotta go catch the bus, but I'm gonna go run over and see if she needs medical.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I'm on the phone with 911. Ma'am, do you need medical assistance? Cause I'm on the phone with 911 right now. Cause she went down pretty hard.
Mr. Ayman, you're out of time.
That's, that's concludes the recording.
But it, that says it all.
That's it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wanda Ayman.
Yes.
Turn some time over to you.
Thank you. I made a handout for you. I'm the person that was on the ground. My elbow was shattered and I was pushed down by the owner of the dogs. Just some constructive criticism tonight. I think Kingman can be better with the way it handled my situation. You have a mission and value statements. My experience does not reflect what these claim to be. I got declination letters for that, from the city attorney to do anything about this. I have not received phone calls back. I wrote to the city manager twice and no emails back. I'm just really being dismissed and this man is getting a free pass in this city. This is just two years of dog reports. His dogs were attacking pigs, killing pigs, dogs running loose, him abusing dogs, allowing dogs to run at large, dogs being dehydrated, mistreated, beat. Here's the stack of criminal cases which represents a whole lot of legal work. Many of these are being dismissed by the city attorney. The, the situations of drug possession, driving with suspended license, theft of services, disorderly conduct, failure to appear, theft of services, drug possession, a lot of these, if you'll read these reports and I'll be happy to meet with any of you, are being dismissed by the city attorney. I'm not sure what's going on here and why this individual is getting a free pass in this city, but it's not right and what happened to me is not right. And I met with Matt Smith last week and he confirmed that the city attorney should have done something and he has not. So hopefully, he said he would get with Carl and see if something would happen, but I've met with them four times now and I was treated very rudely and dismissed. And I do know that these dogs were at large, three of them, they've been wreaking havoc on the city. I do not feel safe anymore walking. This was nine, nine fifteen in the morning. It was very busy on Spring Street and I was attacked by three dogs and a man and he pushed me down and I fell off the curb and fell with no restraint at all, full impact on my dominant arm. So I would like you guys to look into something. I respect you and I would appreciate some help in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayman. Third, Mr. Mike Case.
Hi, I'm Mike Case. Good evening, Mayor Watkins and Councilwomen. The August 16th council meeting shined a positive light of the Bird Scooter Program. Building Councilwoman Mello has received negative input, I have seen negative impacts of the program since it's been approved. I've given you pictures showing bird and rider violations. In the user agreement under Section 7 of Parking Regulations, the scooters are to be parked in the furniture zone, not blocking pedestrian pathways, handicap ramps, et cetera. I wonder how people in the handicap scooters or wheelchairs feel about this. What would ADA say? I also find it interesting that they are allowed to take parking spaces designated for autos and motorcycles. If you look at the article written on the scooters in the Kingman Minor dated August 18th, 2022, you will see a picture taken by the reporter that shows two scooters blocking the sidewalk with a furniture zone to the left where they're supposed to be staged. There are also violations of Section 8 of the Operating Agreement. This section says that the scooters are to be ridden on the street and where available bike lanes and pathways. I also see them on the sidewalks, I have seen them underage riders, two riders on one scooter, riders dangerously going the wrong direction in a lane and crossing in between vehicles. When will it stop? It was also reported that there haven't been any reports of accidents. That doesn't mean that people haven't fallen and sustained bumps or scrapes. Let's be thankful there hasn't been a major accident yet. Mayor Watkins, concerns of safety are still valid. Concerns, Section 10 states that the city receives a 10 cent per ride fee. Is the city really making enough revenue from this program that warrants several violations of the Operating Agreement and the unappealing visual appearances they give the city? They could be found laying down next to handicap ramps, curbs, trash cans, and so on. The presenter also cited a study that said the scooters created an economic increase of $921 per scooter. He did some quick math and said the amounts generate approximately 50,000 for local businesses. I see mostly underage riders using these scooters. I find it hard to believe that they are contributing that much income to the businesses. Ask the local business owners. There are also discussions on scooter used to the airport. It is approximately 4.7 miles from East Mojave Airport Drive from I-40. That can be a hazardous area to travel, not a last mile program, I think. I ask you to take a closer look when you're in town. I would be surprised if you didn't see any violations. Will Bird take responsibility to correct their and the riders' violations? If not, who will? For the safety of everyone, I ask you to take another look at this program and see if it is really a program we want for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Case. As I read in that opening comment of, you know, comments from the public and explaining the rules of public comment, we will direct, of course, staff to take a look at these matters and discuss it with them. So, thank you. Item number four on our agenda is our consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired... If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council members? Anything, we've all had a chance to take a look at them and is there anything that needs to be pulled? Okay. I don't have anything either, so hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is old business, we have none. Number six, new business. Item 6A, consideration of canceling the September 20th, 2022 council meeting. The Arizona Department of Water Resources has scheduled a public hearing in the Board of Supervisors Auditorium for Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. The public hearing will allow for council and staff to provide testimony on their critical need to create an irrigation non-expansive area, also known as an INA, for the Walupi Basin Aquifer to protect our groundwater. Staff is recommending that council cancel the September 20th, 2022 regular city council meeting so that they can attend the hearing. Any discussion on this matter? Councilwoman Mello? None?
None for me.
Okay.
But I do make a motion that we approve canceling the September 20th council meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this matter?
You know, I just wanted to make sure that, since we have a big audience tonight, to let everyone know that this meeting will be happening on September 20th and we need you all to turn up for it and have your voices heard. It's very important, I know the council will be there and so I hope, I see you all there as well.
Okay, I agree with all that has been said and of course, once again, it's a reminder that it will be at the Board of Supervisors Auditorium on Tuesday, September 20th at 6:00 PM. So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item 6B, letter of support to create an irrigation non-expansive area for Walupi Basin Aquifer. The Arizona Department of Water Resources has scheduled a public hearing in the Board of Supervisors Auditorium for Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. The public hearing will allow for council and staff to provide testimony. This letter will serve as the city council's formal request for the creation of an irrigation non-expansion area for the Walupi Basin Aquifer. Staff recommends approval. As far as public comment and discussion, I think we have one here tonight for that. Clerk Annie, who is that?
Jem Morgane.
Jem Morgane? Okay. Ms. Morgane, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Thank you. My name is Jem Morgane. I am a Kingman resident, but I'm also the Executive Director of Real Change PAC, a nonpartisan issue-focused PAC. And water sustainability is one of our prime issues of advocacy. I personally have been fighting this water issue for many, many years, but I'm gonna keep this simple tonight. We're here to urge this council to please vote no support for the irrigation non-expansion area and press Mojave County to request an AMA rather than an IMA, INA. If you don't believe my words, I'm going to play a 30-second clip from Supervisor Lingonfelter. These were his responses after Tim Walsh gave the presentation about the water flow and the gravity of the situation.
You know, it just doesn't make any sense outside the active management areas to have somebody that doesn't have to go through a planning and zoning process, then they can drill as many wells as they want, as large as they want, they can pump as much water as they want. They don't have to meter it and they don't have to report it to anybody about how much they use. That's insanity. We have to get some new world water protections for Arizona. It's not just Mojave County.
So he goes on and talks about that, but I call this Lingonfelter's lament. Every single issue he addresses there is not addressed with an INA. That graphic that I have for you, you can see all those pieces that I've overlaid on the left, those are the comments made by Supervisor Lingonfelter and you can see where they're addressed and where they're not. We are long past an irrigation non-expansion area to be proactively helpful for us. The other most important part of this is, this is not a local issue. Forty, fifty years ago, I probably would have been in support of an INA, but I'm not because the people who are coming here are corporate interests from all around the world, literally. We had Saudi Arabia corporate interests here who had depleted their water resources and they couldn't feed their cattle, so they came here to grow alfalfa and ship it back. We've got California almond growers who are coming here because the water in California has been depleted and so they're coming here. The Phoenix developers are also, they've depleted their water capacity within our state and they're coming here. These are global issues that are severely affected by global climate change. This is now the moment for us to proactively protect our water aquifer and the INA is not enough. And it's not okay to just say, well, it's better than nothing because it's not. It's not, so please, vote no support and press for the AMA. Thank you.
Ms. Morgane? Hello? In case any-
I just called the public where there's no-
Well, no, no. In case any of our council members, or if we have any questions.
Yes, yes.
Any questions for Mrs. Morgane?
I don't have any. I am curious, though, is Mr. Ernhart here?
Erhart.
Erhart.
Unfortunately, no, he was called to Flagstaff for work related and he is not. We have requested multiple times to be able to meet with various council members to more specifically address this. That graphic is just the very surface overview of what is not going to be addressed with the INA.
Well, I just wanted to put into the record that you did say that you had several unanswered requests to meet with the new mayor and other council members. I never received any requests, so I would have loved to have met and spoke with you folks. I am very concerned about water and I am also interested in the differences between the INA and the AMA. The AMA seems to be a lot more restrictive than an INA and I would have loved to have conversation with you, so although you did make that statement or whomever provided this, I didn't get an opportunity.
To my knowledge, he did not reach out to you. I know that he reached out to Ken Watkins, the mayor, and Keith Walker.
Cause I do sit on the Water Sustainability Task Force for the City of Kingman and I listen to those meetings and what we're trying to do to get a plan in place and I really would have liked the opportunity, so I just want to put that into the record, thank you.
I appreciate that.
I also, I was checking my emails and I know Jack and I talked in person on the phone that we needed to get together and talk, but I don't remember seeing an email, but I'm going to check my emails again.
He has sent a couple.
I will do that.
We've been attempting over several weeks. I let Jack take lead because he has the relationships with those particular where I don't have, you know, I don't know either of you personally. But yes, it's not enough.
Okay. You know, I know you have it in your chart here explaining the differences between an AMA and an INA.
So that's not my chart, that's directly downloaded from the Arizona Department of Water Resources. The link at the top, you can go to that site and download that directly yourself and that's exactly, with the exception of the added corrective information and of course Supervisor Lingonfelter's comments would not be on the ADWR graphic.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I do have another question. Will Mr. Erhart be at the water meeting?
Yes.
To speak in favor-
We will both be there, yes.
Or not in favor of INAs, but he will have comments about AMAs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a request from Councilwoman, would you please, I think that's a great idea.
I'd like to, if we can, hear from staff, maybe Rob Owen, on the staff's position on why we're being asked to support an INA versus an AMA.
Manager Foggan will pick on you. Well, we're not prepared to present anything tonight. I don't know if Rob, how much study Rob's done on this and... He's virtual, yeah. So, I mean, I don't think one precludes the other. What I would say is, great, look at it, you can look at the, one, you have the INA that the AWR is willing to, the director's willing to look at and if there's enough public support put into place, that does not preclude or keep you from being able to do a citizen petition for an AMA. Rob, do you have anything to add?
There he is.
Not a whole lot, sir. You know, an AMA is targeted towards all water users in a basin where the INA specifically is dealing with irrigation. And there are quite a few differences. I don't think that one would necessarily preclude the other or moving from one to another would be something that could not happen, but I think these are all things that we can discuss with the Department of Water Resources and Mojave County and our other partners on this front.
Is there an opportunity to include in the letter that we, as a city, you know, would like to see more restrictions like the AMA? I mean, in one letter, can we say?
I wouldn't recommend it because this hearing's on the INA directly and the director of DWR has the authority to take public comment and create an INA. I do not think that confusing those two matters would help your argument for an INA.
I think this is a tough situation when this is right around the corner. This is the last meeting we have before we can say yea or nay and we don't have solid ground to stand on which one we would prefer as a council. So it almost feels like a missed opportunity, but unfortunately, I feel like saying no to the INA says that we don't support any sort of groundwater regulation even though we would love to have a situation where our water is protected for generations to come.
May I address the response about the citizen initiative?
I think, I will, let me make a comment too. As I think Manager Foggan mentioned, this specific hearing is to consider an INA only. I think if we come out in strength, supporting an INA but then have more people there saying we'd really like to push towards an AMA. In other words, I think at this point in time, it might be easier to get the win for an INA to start with. I don't know if we can get the AMA. Is that sort of, I'm sort of understanding, Ron?
Well, we have not, I'll be honest, we've not done a lot of research into AMA.
Okay.
I mean, that's the honest-
I have heard that AMAs are harder to attain as opposed to an INA.
They're extremely difficult with a lot of moving parts and a lot of rules.
And once again, this hearing is being called specifically for an INA. So that is the tough part. He might not, we might offend him or they might just shut us off completely if we were to bring up AMA at this point in time. I think what's gonna make volumes of a statement is the fact that if we show up in force with a lot of people here from Kingman and the surrounding area supporting that we want something done.
I appreciate your comments, I respectfully disagree. That is the will of the council.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
To Councilmember Staley's comment, not to confuse the matter and say INA and AMA, could we put a clause in the letter that says an INA or other water sustainability options for our area? I mean, just leaving the door a little open because I'm with Councilmember Staley. I don't know how I feel about an INA versus an AMA and I'm really sad that I didn't get to meet with you guys, so I can't compare the two. So, the timing is off for me.
An AMA is just not on the table. I mean, that's not what DWR is offering and there's not a citizen petition that's in place to ask to require a vote of the people for an AMA. That's, I mean, there's a lot of work that has gone in to water legislation the last four years and we've tried to get a number of pieces of legislation passed without success. And having the director of DWR show up with at least, I don't want to say olive branch, but an opportunity to keep this conversation going because Representative Cobb has worked, she worked this deal for four, five, six years now and we no longer have her and she ran into roadblock after roadblock. So the fact that we're to this point is, we're, I don't want to say light years ahead of where we were, but we're light years ahead of where we were. And having the Department of Water Resources willing to come and hold a public hearing on this is important and frankly, again, it doesn't stop, it doesn't close any doors, it doesn't stop us from moving forward with additional legislation. It just gives us a foothold in and I don't see that we're hurting ourselves by getting an INA. I don't think anybody's gonna say, well, you got an INA and you should be happy about that. So, I mean, I'm not debating, we just have not had an opportunity to research. I can't sit here and tell you that we should do an AMA. I can't sit here and tell you you shouldn't do one. I just, that hasn't been on the table.
Mr. Foggan, if I may add, just-
Yes, Mr. Ron.
I think the rationale for proposing with the INA to start with is that agricultural irrigation is our priority threat right now. You know, Kingman, Kingman Water System water users are among the most water efficient in the whole state of Arizona. Kingman hasn't been recruiting large industrial water users. Our recruitment for the industrial park, other areas specifically targets non-large water users on the industrial side. So I don't think there's anything to say that, you know, that might not change in the future and maybe that evolves, but as far as the immediate threat to our basin, it is agricultural irrigation and I think that's what an INA would help us address. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. And, yes.
Just one more comment, sort of in line with what you had said, Mr. Foggan, is we were at the league conference last week, I had the opportunity to speak to different state legislators, some incoming, some outgoing, our lobbyists. It doesn't sound like we have a good chance in the next couple of years of getting legislation passed. It kind of sounds like nobody knows what's gonna happen in the next couple of years. There just isn't a lot of stability and it doesn't sound like we're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna advocate for Mojave County or for Kingman's water, not Mojave County cause that's a whole nother issue. So I appreciate your passion for this item and I am sorry, I know that what you're asking for and I don't think we're gonna be able to give that to you tonight. I have to agree, they're allowing a conversation about INAs. The agriculture is one of our biggest threats right now and I know you said it, but I do feel like at least this is one small win for our water, but we're just gonna have to keep fighting afterwards. So it isn't a perfect answer and I wish it was.
Thank you. Ms. Morgane, thank you too for your comments and all the comments that have been said, we appreciate it. I think this is a step, as has been pointed out, in the right direction and moving in that direction and then hopefully we can expand that sphere even more, so. Okay, we would entertain then a motion to- So, okay, we would entertain then a motion to approve Item 6B, Letter of Support to Create an INA.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
My second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. Council vacancy, Item C. The council may fill a vacancy by appointment pursuant to state statute. When Mayor Miles resigned, Vice Mayor Watkins became the mayor. This resulted in his old council position to become vacant. That open position's term ends December of this year. The council may fill that open position by appointment. The process to make the appointment is determined by the council. Staff requests that council discuss this issue and provide direction to staff. Okay, I will start off. I think, sort of along the same lines as what we just agreed with with Vice Mayor, that we only have four meetings left. Four, yep. So I would, I would think that it would follow suit, that we would do the same with this item also as far as the council vacancy, unless we feel a need, and once again, but the time to fill that, for example, doing appointments or interviewing, that kind of stuff, would eat up all our time, would be a factor. Yes, Councilwoman Staley.
I respectfully disagree, only because we have two outright elected officials. Is that not correct, Clerk?
That is correct. They will not take their seats until that December 6th meeting.
Correct. So my thinking is that why don't we just appoint one of them? I think that it makes it fair to go with the one that had the most votes, and then just get them into the swing of things just a few months earlier, since they're already going to take that position anyway. And like I said, I don't like being short counsel. We have some important votes coming up and some decisions to make, and I feel better with a full counsel. So I respectfully disagree with you, Mayor.
Valid point. And what about the fact that we are also short two more council people that are not here? This is somewhat important, too, sort of weighing, once again.
Agreed, agreed. I would then make the comment that could we put it off until October, then, you know, until we have more people?
You can absolutely table an item. You just need to make a motion.
Then I would make that motion to table until the October, first meeting in October.
Okay, we have that motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any more discussion on it?
My only comment was that I didn't want to pick, I didn't want to seem like we're favor, you know, playing favorites towards somebody and create any undue drama from that. But that was a great idea, just pick the one that got the most votes. So then I absolutely support this, and I'm ready to vote on it.
And also, along those same lines, Clerk Meredith, they, those two new council members that will be coming, and of course, we won't know until the third one will be, when does the league have training for them?
We haven't received a notification on when that's going to be scheduled, but generally, it is scheduled for November, December.
Is it in that time period? I know, I went to it before I was formally put on council, it seems like, and so all of us have gone through that training, I think. So I was just wondering.
Yeah, I want to say that they normally do it after the general election, so that they're capturing everybody that was not only in the primary, but the general. We also provide a candidate, or not a candidate, but a new council orientation that we do as part, and kind of hand in hand with the league in that November time period as well.
I remember doing that, too. Councilwoman Staley?
I'm just assuming that both of the electeds are willing to start early. Have you made contact with them?
We don't, we have not asked if someone's willing to start early. We didn't know what the decision of the council was to even fill the position with such a little amount of time.
Okay.
Well, now we have more time. We have until October.
We do, and I'm sure.
If we vote in favor.
Yes, and I'm sure after hearing this discussion, we will, we might hear something from them.
Okay, I hope so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling this item till the first council meeting in October. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item D, Ordinance Number 1945, rezoning certain property from RR Rural Residential to R110, residential single family with a minimum of 10,000 square foot lot size located on the 3,600 block of North Prescott Street. Jillian, and I'm sorry if I slaughter this name, Avatably, Dable?
Avatably.
And Skyridge Custom Homes, LLC, property owner, have requested to rezonate certain property from RR Rural Residential to R110 residential single family with a minimum of 10,000 square foot lot size. The applicant requested the rezoning with the intent of further partitioning the two existing one acre lots into .5 acre lots, yielding four lots in total. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on August 9th, 2022 to consider the matter. The commission voted three to one to recommend approval of the request, subject to conditions based on their findings made in accordance with Section 2-50.020(c) 5 of the Kingman Zoning Code. Staff recommends approval. Who on council serves on that commission, or was able to attend that meeting?
That is me.
Yes, Councilwoman Staley, would you like to discuss this, or share some more information with us?
Yes. This was a great meeting. There was a lot of discussion. As you can see, it was a three-one vote, and I think that's the most important part to bring up, is the one who was voting against did bring up a really valid point, and that was that there is, this is a dirt road, and we're allowing these homes to be built there, and there will not be a requirement to pave the street when they build. And that, that was a sticking point for him, and he did vote against it. They did go over the requirements the city has right now for these dirt streets, and I think that's something that maybe the Planning and Zoning Commission's going to continue looking at. But I know it's something for all of us, we want to see these dirt roads get pavement, and it, by letting people build on a dirt street without improvements, it just feels like we're not making any progress. So that was his one, his one reason for voting against, and I think it was something that I really want to make sure to bring up to council tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that information. You do bring up a valid point. I drove by that location again today.
Mayor, maybe you want staff report before you have comment?
Any more comments?
Just, just suggesting.
I think you're probably right, Mr. Foggan. Thank you. Okay, we will turn the time over.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, representing the Planning and Zoning Department or Division. The case has been introduced. It is the Avatablys. The property is just south of Keno, over by the county Public Works Building on Prescott Street, about the 3,600 block. And on the slides, I, I didn't do this in the PowerPoint version, so I, let's see if I can get this right. There, we've got the yellow star there. That's the subject property. Just west is Bank Street, and then I zoomed in a little bit there, and the red square, again, the yellow star, subject property, about two acres. It's two lots in the subdivision there. The area was annexed in March of 2000, and so shortly after, you know, within a month, it was rezoned, I believe, to what it is now. We have the one acre lots and the smaller RMH 20 lots, 20,000 square feet, and they're actually half acre lots, very deep lots. Most of the construction that's happened in that area is, well, a lot of it's old, it's older, I should say, manufactured homes, single and double. There are some stick-built homes being constructed there now in the past couple of years, and directly to the east of the subject property is a two acre cemetery. There doesn't appear to be very, very many users right now, but it's, it's a cemetery, and it's been created and cleared for that. The general plan designates the subject property as medium density residential, which the requested zone of R, I should have mentioned that, R110 zoning, that does meet the density requirements of the MDR designation in the general plan. And so the, again, the star is the subject property. You can see there's a mix in the area, but generally, north and west are residential designations. And then to the east, you have commercial and the public quasi-state and county and city properties all involved there on Andy Devine. The zoning, again, is currently rural residential, and they're requesting to go to R110, which does not actually allow manufactured housing, which is generally the predominant construction in the area, but again, they're older homes. And ultimately, the applicant has said that they, they don't want to go down to a 10,000 square foot lot, they want to do half acre lots. So the two existing lots, they want to eventually split those and make four half acre lots in total. One of the reasons the R110 is appropriate is because the width of the lot has to be 80 feet, and those four lots equal 160, 320 feet. So it's just, that's the sweet spot for them. If they would have gone with an RMH 20 or something, the lot width would have been much wider, and it actually wouldn't be very, it wouldn't be consistent with those lots that have been there for a long time. The, as was mentioned by council member, the North Prescott Street in this, in this section is a dirt road. It's 40 feet wide right of way. It is on the city's list of maintained roads, so we accept the responsibility to maintain and grade and keep those roads passable and use, able to be used by residents and, of course, emergency services and others. There is, now, there's water line, six inch water line through North Prescott Street, and then now there's an eight inch sewer main that the applicant has actually extended to the south of their property, or to the south end of their property, I should say. The site, actually, these pictures do a pretty good job. It's generally a 1% slope to the east, to the west, I'm sorry. So about a 1%. It's not in the floodplain. It's a very developable site in terms of actually any construction but residential. These are looking to the north. Prescott Street is to the right. Our zoning signs there. We did notify the public per our 300 foot notification requirement, and we did post the site, and we did also place the ad in the paper for this meeting, and the PNZ, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Only one comment's been received so far, and that was in support of the proposal. Department and agent comments, only the city engineering had comment, and that was the need for additional right of way. The right of way, as I mentioned, was 40 feet, it needs to be 54 for a local road there. And so seven feet requirement from this applicant would do their half of widening that right of way that will eventually be needed, so. Last year, we adopted the new zoning code, of course, and within that is the new process for citizen review input or process. And that requires generally for rezonings or general plan amendments, conditional use permits. The applicant actually has to hold public meetings before they apply. So they have to post their site, they have to reach out to neighbors. It's a really neat process, and it's working well, I think. We're getting anecdotal type information that we can measure things against, and they followed that process here. We go through the checklist with them, and they did that. In the summary of the meeting, again, they had two meetings. There was only two people that showed up, and it was the first meeting, but they did have concerns about the dust on the roads, being unpaved. They wanted, they were in support of petitioning for, to have the roads paved eventually, and then want to petition to maybe have the roads' speed limit decreased to 15 miles an hour. They thought that would help with the streets. That was kind of the input they gathered from their meeting. The analysis for the proposal, I mentioned, the desire is to have the half acre lots, so four of them. The new analysis in the zoning code, basically, it changed quite a bit from the last zoning code, but I put in here the analysis, or the criteria that's required to make findings for are in black here, and they're in the zoning code. So first one is the amendment, the proposed zoning amendment is consistent and conforms with the goals of the general plan and applicable specific plans. And as I mentioned, that is the general plan 2030, and it does, is consistent with the land use densities there of the medium density residential, which it's designated as, and R110 would basically amount to 4.36 dwelling units per acre, within that three to eight dwelling units range. The next criterion is the proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, convenience, and welfare, and will add to the public good as described in the general plan. Again, I went over the densities. The sewer line is now further down Prescott Street, which allows, of course, for better management of waste, using best practices, and has a city. And it will continue south as more development occurs, and again, better management of that disposal. And of course, water and sewer does encourage infill, and ultimately, that hope would be more and more pressure to get that road paved and adequate right of way and improvements. This is a big criterion, but it's basically, is a site suitable in terms of design, location, size, and operating characteristics, so that it can provide for public and emergency vehicles access for them, public services, utilities, potable water, schools, solid waste collection, storm drainage, the range of needs for urban development. And the site, as I mentioned, is generally flat. It's rectangular, very accommodating for residential development. The street is unimproved, as we mentioned, but it still is maintained by the city and allows for emergency management and other users to access the street and the individual properties. Nevertheless, the street widening is needed for the future, and so a condition of approval that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended is the additional seven feet of right of way that the applicant needs to dedicate before any development occurs there. And so the, as was mentioned, the vote was three to one to recommend approval of this request with those two conditions, and that is, number one there, is prior to any development of the subject property, the owner shall dedicate seven feet of additional right of way along North Prescott Street. And number two, the property owner will participate financially in the future road improvements of North Prescott Street. Yes, we, just to address the dirt street item, we, currently, our policy is not such that if they wanted to build homes out there now, they could. It's, our policy allows them to do that on a, on a city-maintained dirt road. So to require it for a lot of what amounts to eventually a lot split, there's that proportionality issue there, and so it goes against our current policy, and it is, it was suggested that maybe the improvements right in front of the lots, which wouldn't really connect and wouldn't make sense, or extending it all the way to Keno or south. So the impact of just those two large lots, staff didn't see that as sufficient enough to go against our current policies or anything like that. So that doesn't mean the policy can't be revisited, but current policy, staff recommended approval to the PNZ Commission with those two conditions, and they forwarded that recommendation to you as well. And that's in the form of Ordinance 1945. Thank you.
Question I have right off the bat. Of course, if, let's say we agree to this rezoning, can they make it any smaller than the half acre lots that they're going to do?
There are.
I mean, most of the lots over there are half acre lots.
Yeah.
Down that street.
Yeah, there, there may be some creative configurations that we didn't anticipate, but currently, as I mentioned, the lot widths are required to be 80 feet.
Okay.
Now, if that's a preclusive flag lot or anything like that, I haven't explored that entirely, but we did, and when we were writing the staff report, we were considering putting a condition in there that they do not go beyond or below a half acre lot unless the area is rezoned or something to that effect. So that, that could be a very appropriate, and that would keep it in coherent development with the others.
Did you mention their intent is to do stick-built homes there as opposed to mobile homes?
Yeah, current, the current zoning, and, well, the proposed zoning would preclude manufactured homes.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And Mayor, I, the one thing that we always fail to tell the council on these is a rezone is one step. If there was an attempt to bring something more than what has been. If there was an attempt to bring something more than what has been suggested, you will see it, because it'll, they have to come back, right?
Right.
And for, for their, for their ultimate plan. So, I mean, the, and being able to, I don't want to say take a bite at the apple twice, but you actually have that opportunity to see what they're actually going to propose with a rezone.
Okay.
And the R110 does, does establish entitlements for that type, that size of zone, so that's something to be careful of, too.
And you did one, mention one other thing, that they agreed to the fact that for future, that they would participate as owners of those properties in future if there were, for example, a improvement district formed, I would imagine, correct, to pave the road? That's what, that's how it would have to happen, right?
Yes.
That they would participate in that improvement district.
It was more of a condition that will have to happen anyway.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a record builder, and, and the applicant is fully aware of it by putting it as a condition, and they were not against it.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
The road question, well, the road question, you answered it. It's just, we keep putting more development on dirt roads, and we've got to find a way to stop this. We ask developers, when they put in projects, they put in the infrastructure, and we have just got to set the standard that we cannot do this anymore. And it's, you know, it, it shouldn't be the fault of this particular individual trying to rezone, you know, the burden shouldn't be placed upon them, but we have just got to get something figured out, so this doesn't continue to happen. It's one of the most often talked about complaints that I receive, so, but no, you, you addressed it. So I appreciate the condition in here and the forethought that we are going to need to do something in the future, because as we build more, there's more traffic, and traffic on dirt creates dust, so, you know, and what happens out there when it rains, like we just had, so, anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, I think it has been said, all has been said on it. I would, we would entertain a motion then for item 6D, ordinance number 1945, rezoning a certain property from RR to all that.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1945.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item 6E, resolution number 5430, adopting a notice of intent to increase wastewater capacity fees and setting a public hearing date. In November 2021, wastewater capacity fees were adopted, providing for a long-term financial plan for the expansion of the wastewater system. The Grace Neal sewer main interceptor line was not included in the original capacity fee report or calculation. In order to find, fund the interceptor line with wastewater capacity fees, a modification to the report and fee are being proposed. Staff recommends council approve resolution number 5430, adopting a notice of intent to increase wastewater capacity fees and setting a public hearing. Tina, welcome.
Or Tina.
Huh?
Or Tina.
Oh, Tina?
Yeah.
I said Tina, did I?
Oh, it sounded like you said Tina, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's all right. I guess we're going to turn some time over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. So the summary stated it best, we did adopt capacity fees back in December, and part of those wastewater capacity fees are interceptor lines. And as we went through the budget process and during the budget work sessions, it was requested that the Grace Neal sewer main line be a funded project and be identified as being funded with capacity fees. However, the report and our current capacity fee does not identify that line or include that line in the calculation. So we've been working with Ben Griffin of Tischler Bice, who have, who is a familiar face around here since July, and he will give a short presentation, and we can certainly answer any questions.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Tina. Mayor, council members, as Tina said, I'll give a short presentation, you know, like she said, you adopted these fees at the end of last year, so a lot of this should be fresh in your memory, but we'll do a very quick overview and then get to the actual changes that are proposed. All right, so, just a quick overview of capacities, capacity fees, they are similar to development fees. The reason we are using capacity fees in Kingman is because they allow for collection outside of the city limits, so those users who are out in the county connecting to your system, you can actually charge them a fee, whereas you would not be able to do that with, with development fees. Also, there is a shorter adoption period with the capacity fees, so that is why we're able to, you know, quickly make this change to add the Grace Neal water line or sewer line. So the adoption process, you can see in the middle of this slide, tonight, we're proposing that you adopt a notice of intention. After that, Tina and the city will advertise the report for 30 days, and then at that point, you can adopt a capacity fee, and then they will go into effect after 30 days. Again, we treat them just like the development fees, so we're still saying, you know, keep them in a separate fund, we're going to, you know, we continue to use a little service requirements. Again, we treat them just like development fees, and that way, you know, we don't have any issues come up later. Quick review of eligible costs, if a facility or improvement required to serve new development is eligible, we can't use the capacity fees for maintenance or repairs. If there is excess capacity in an existing facility, you can buy into that capacity, and you cannot fix an existing deficiency unless there is an outside funding plan. So, you know, there are three methodologies. They, they look at points in time, so past, really cost recovery, so buying into that excess capacity. Present would be incremental expansion, so maintaining an existing level of service. In plan-based is, you know, looking at the future and saying, okay, well, you know, this is where we need to be, you know, to serve future development. So the only, again, the only change we're making to the proposed fees would be adding the Grace Neal line as a plan-based improvement, so again, we're looking at the future, adding capacity to serve future development. There are three types of credits that we would need to assess, so there's site-specific, so if a developer constructs something that is included, you would need to provide a credit for that. So if a developer, in this example, constructed a portion of the Grace Neal line, they would just need to get a credit for, for that. There is a debt service credit, so if you're asking the fee payer to pay debt service through some other sort of mechanism, and you're asking them to pay through the capacity fee, you need to provide a credit for that, which you'll see this in, you know, a few slides, which is already included in your existing fees, and we're just rolling forward that credit. And then finally, dedicated revenue. So if there's a dedicated property tax, or sales tax, or gas tax, we would need to provide a credit for that. All right, so what you see on slide seven, these are the wastewater factors. Essentially, what this is saying is, you know, on average, a residential customer generates 170 gallons of wastewater per day. We're going to use that as our equivalent dwelling unit, so your base fees will be assessed, assuming 170 gallons generated per day. Based on, you know, 10 years of projected growth, you would generate about 750,000 additional gallons of wastewater over this 10-year period. All right, slide eight, the top, the wastewater facilities or the treatment facilities, we have made no changes to this, so this at the top is exactly what you saw at the end of last year. So $9.47 per gallon of treatment capacity. At the bottom, the interceptor facilities, this is what we're changing. So on the left side, you see November of 2021, you know, about $12 million worth of interceptor facilities, and at a cost of about $15.70 per gallon. On the right side, this is what we're proposing, so you can see outlined in red, the Grace Neal sewer main, adding that bumps the, the total cost of eligible interceptor facilities to about 15.5 million. We divide that by the 10-year increase in gallons, as I mentioned, is about 750,000. So for interceptor facilities in the proposed fees, it would be $20.63 per gallon compared to $15.70 per gallon, which you have today. As I mentioned, we do include a credit, this was included in the 2021 fees. Essentially, this is just to make sure that we're not charging the fee payer once through the wastewater revenue, the monthly bills, and then a second time through the capacity fee, so it's making sure that, you know, again, we're offsetting that, that dedicated revenue source. On the left side, these are the proposed water fees, so left side is 2021, so the existing adopted wastewater fee, your base fee is $3,233. On the right side, you can see that the proposed base fee is $4,072. Again, this is, you know, essentially just adding that Grace Neal sewer main is increasing the cost per gallon on the interceptor facilities. Nothing else has changed, the treatment facilities, still the same cost, the wastewater revenue credit is the same, the average day gallons is the same. It's just that, that increase by adding the Grace Neal line. So the fee summary, as you see here, we are not making any changes to the water fees. We are making a change to the wastewater fee, so the proposed combined water and wastewater fee would be just under $5,000, whereas your current fee is about $4,100. And as I mentioned, a few slides back for the adoption timeline, tonight, this is the notice of intent. After 60 days, if you adopt the notice of intent, you can have a public hearing on the actual proposed capacity fees. If you decide at that point to adopt those fees, then the proposed capacity fees would go into effect on December 15th. So it's the end of my presentation, so available for any questions if needed.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Mello.
I had put some notes in my phone from, at budget time, so would it increase a meter for a single-family home? Does it increase that?
It doesn't have anything to do with meter.
It wouldn't affect that at all?
No, no.
Okay, never mind then.
Just sewer.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, councilwoman, you're reaching for your button, so it's a giveaway. Councilwoman Sally.
I, I'm in support of this because I feel like there is growth that's happening out there anyway, and this would open up more opportunities, so I, I'm in support of this to see where we go and get to the public hearing stage.
Question I have, of course, this is funding the Grace Neal interceptor, and it helps that development out there, but all across Kingman, developers will be paying this new fee, this increased fee, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, and none for Tina either, I think? Okay. I would hear a motion then on 6E for resolution, approving resolution number 5430, adopting a notice of intent to increase wastewater capacity fees and setting a public hearing date.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion, we have a motion, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Department reports, item number seven, our item 7A, draw site update.
Mayor, I can jump in on that real quick.
Okay, Carl, our, our city attorney?
I'm trying not to, yeah, I'm trying not to speak too much, so you guys don't have to listen to me. This is going to just be an update regarding the engineering aspects. We're not covering legal tonight, we'll be doing that at a future council meeting, and we'll get a little further down the road with some topics that we're looking at on our side. So it's the folks from Haley and Aldrich just going to give you a brief update, just let you know where we're at.
Okay. We will turn some time over to you, and could you state your name, I'm sorry, your name again?
Pej Manasruggi.
Okay.
They call me Pej, everybody calls me Pej.
Real good, thank you.
All right, thanks. Good evening, is a presentation?
Hey, Carl, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
We hope you start feeling better. We barely understood what you were saying, in fact, most of us did not, I don't think. Maybe Mr. Boggan did, but...
So really, I'll try to help you out, Carl.
Yeah, Carl, you just take it easy, it sounds like you're sick.
Yeah, Carl's very sick. So really, what we wanted to do is share with you operationally what the Dross site cleanup is going to look like, kind of where we are finalizing it. I think what Carl's referring to is that we'll have an update on the ultimate finalization of the Dross agreement, but we wanted to just give you a heads up on what the cleanup actually will consist of, what it will look like. Pej, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's all right, thanks. I've been the project manager for the Dross site since it started working on behalf of the city, thanks for your opportunity. I also brought my boss for the last 20 years, or at least feels like 20 years, Philip Lagus, just in case, to answer any difficult questions the mayor and the council would have. Oh, is it better now?
Yeah.
So we received the notice to proceed for pre-construction activities unidentified during characterization and volume determinations. One of the items that we wanted to really figure out was these furnaces that were there and they're not there, is the foundation is still there. And as part of our investigation in June, we determined that, yes, that the furnaces are still there, that the foundation for the furnaces. We also wanted to do some geotechnical testing, because the initial government testing of the material seemed a little light to us. It seems the material was more dense and heavier, which would directly impact transportation disposal. We also wanted to delineate the boundaries of the Dross, we wanted to make sure the Dross that we are, we have delineated, doesn't go beyond the boundaries of where we thought it was. So those were all the items that we needed to do. We also did the topographic survey of the Dross site, we wanted to have a fresh set of plans. And also, we needed to actually develop the design, the specifications for subcontracted work, and also construction, and finally, put the bid solicitation and cost estimate together for final settlement with the government. So the notice to proceed was May 25th. We have delineated the areas of the Dross, we have done the asbestos testing of the debris that we found, and the foundations that we found beneath the site. We have completed that investigation. In August, we also completed the survey, we have done the 30% design, which is the preliminary design of the, the construction. We have began the vendor identification and solicitation, and we have completed geotechnical testing, and we did confirm that the material is actually heavier than, than was, was assumed by the government. Coming up, we're meeting actually pretty soon to discuss the 90% design specifications, bid solicitation, and phase three cost estimate, draft of the phase three cost estimate, which would be by the end of this month. And we are now targeting to finish the 100% design by the end of October, and prepare the final phase three cost estimates, and begin the settlement negotiations. Once we are, we have the notice to proceed for construction, we are estimating that the construction, the full construction, this is start to finish. the construction, the full construction, this is start to finish, with the closure to be approximately a year. The construction we are estimating is going to be 270 days, and that includes, you know, from literally removal of the asphalt, digging all the foundations, throwing all the foundations, like dispose of them, begin construction and digging up the Dross, the waste, hauling it offsite, backfilling, compaction, and then final asphalt. We are estimating that that to take about 270 days. But right before, somewhere between about maybe the sixth month or seventh month, we will have all the environmental testing done so we can begin our post-construction, which would be writing the report for obtaining and no further action determination from ADQ, submitting the report to ADQ, and go through the process of negotiating the final closure for the site. We think all of that to take about a year. We have, I put the map of the areas that we have to excavate. This covers an area of approximately 15 acres, and the red areas are really the deepest of the excavation that we got to do. It's about, figure about 15 feet, 15 to 16 feet deep, the red areas. The yellow areas are about 10 feet. Green is the shallowest is about five feet. Actually, the blue is the shallowest, about two feet. So it's quite uneven that the volume that needs to be dig up in different places and kind of stockpiled and then haul offsite. That is the end of my presentation.
Questioned, how many furnaces were out there?
Three of them.
There were three? Okay. Interesting. And like you said, I know I was going to ask, and you just said that most of this material is, the deepest material is 15 to 16 feet?
15 to 16, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And I was wondering, do most of us understand what this process is? Of course, it's out at the airport, it's in our taxiways, and the asphalt is actually bubbling out. There's, it's being pushed up because of the gases that are being caused by the corrosion of the aluminum that's in the ground, right?
That's correct. I, when I, when I saw it the first time with Phil, we couldn't believe that it could actually bubble up to the sizes that it has bubbled up, but that's correct.
Okay. So this Dross is literally the Dross from the melting from the furnaces. It was the slag, whatever was left over, and they just dug a hole and buried it?
That's, that's correct. The entire process took about two years, so 1948 to about 1950.
Okay.
The aluminum that they received and all the ingots, they were hauled offsite for other purposes.
Correct.
The waste was remained outside. It was buried in 2000. So the burial of it was actually more recent than when it was first generated, you know, more than 50 years ago. So the, the part that they didn't realize is that Dross is active. With heat and water, it starts reacting and generates all kinds of gases, and that's what caused most of the problems that are at the site.
Well, I appreciate that because I just wanted to make sure that as a public, that everybody understands what is happening out there at the airport and why it is so important to, to solve this problem.
I appreciate.
Mayor?
Yes? Question?
I have two questions. So how do you dispose of it? And where does it go?
Landfill, hazardous waste landfill. The landfill that we are talking to, and they've been helping us since, since I want to say 2017, has been US Ecology in Beatty, Nevada. It's a, it's a very specific type of waste that needs to be disposed of at the right facility.
And you just load it into a truck and truck it there?
Either, either truck or train.
Okay. So it's not volatile when it's, when it's moving? Not, nothing like gases emitted, anything for the public to be concerned about?
Yes. Once, once the Dross is removed from its, its current configuration, because the current configuration is, is all mixed, it's all concentrated into these trenches. Once we remove them up and there is, there is some soil that has been contaminated in the process of burial, that has less Dross than some of the other Dross. Once we mix it up and we bring it on site, and we really like to do this during the cold season, January to say March, we like to be done with the digging part of it. Once it's, it's placed into trucks and it's, it's hauling offsite, there are no issues. It's really that the current configuration where it's really, really concentrated in these trenches that's causing the problem.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Councilwoman.
I have some notes here. I just wanted to make sure. One, one question about the testing, you said you will be testing for the first six months. So does that mean that there could be some surprises and maybe some delays? Or do you feel confident that this is the plan going forward?
We, we know where all of it is within this Dross site area. What we need to do is demonstrate to ADQ, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, that we have removed all of it, and the testing that we're going to do is confirmation to make sure that whatever that's left in place is, is meeting the applicable thresholds.
Okay.
Right now, we're targeting for residential.
Oh, good. Okay. My other question was, as you're digging this up, you know, we have a lot of wind here, and, and some questions I've had is if there's any concern about in the digging, this, this gets airborne and can possibly be toxic to people that are working in the area and breathing it in?
So a couple of, couple of items here. One of them is our engineers are now working with one of the biggest experts in the country on, on Dross, and we want, we want to make sure that, this is Dr. Stark that has been helping us through the process. We want to make sure that the right configuration of mix comes out, where, you know, some of the less contaminated with some of the more contaminated is, is compiled together. And we use water to make sure that once everything is up, is on the ground, is not generating any dust. And we're also looking into measures for managing a lot of fugitive dust from the stockpiles until they're actually loaded into trucks, which would be sealed up and, and taken offsite. So all of those are, we're actually aware of the issues. We're aware of the, the specific time of the day that Kingman becomes very windy. We've been, we've been working with it for the last six, seven years. So we're carefully putting all of those, incorporating all of those plans into our excavation plan.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. The other item is I did just recently hear that we were considering putting it on train instead of trucking it out, because I remember the number of trips by truck was astronomical. So will this help shorten the timeline by being able to load on a train if that works out?
Perhaps. We're, we're looking at the options of how many train cars we can actually have on site, and the, the most important piece of this is that once we start the process, that we don't have to wait for anything. If, if 10 train cars can get loaded up really fast, but we have to wait five days for another five or 10 cars to come back, that doesn't help anybody. So, so we're working through a very detailed schedule to see what's the best option for train, trucking, and then the final disposal facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Remind us again, what is your, what are you thinking is a projected start date? And you said it would take about a year, but when are you thinking of a projected start date for this?
I let Carl answer that question. I don't think.
Okay, so.
We do not answer that question.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I think that's, so far, that's all the questions that we have.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have some more on a future date, and we'll, we'll come back to it.
Absolutely. Anytime. We'll love to come up here, talk to you guys.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our hope is that it's gone, and you can't ask any questions because it's gone.
Okay. Item 7B under Department reports, our recreation update, and I would think that Mr. Mayor Smith is going to.
Well, I'm going to start on, I'm going to start out by saying, thank you very much, Mayor and Council for bringing this up. We are always happy to talk about our recreation program. We're very proud of the job they do, and especially this year, it's been a very challenging year, like in many other departments and companies, and finding bodies to work has been a very big challenge, and we lost our two recreation coordinators in the spring. So I brought Yvonne Cosio here to talk because she knows more about recreation than anybody. So I thought we'd bring her and let her share all. There, I'm not seeing where they're, there it is, right there. Right here. There, I got it, I think. Well. It's right there. There it is. And so like I said, Yvonne has done a great job this year, but under the challenges that we've had. So I'll turn it over to Yvonne. Thank you.
Welcome, Yvonne. Good to see you again.
Thank you. As you said, many years. I've been with the city for 23, 35 in recreation altogether. So thank you for having me this evening. Obviously, that's me right there. I do have two, as Mike had mentioned, two new recreation coordinators, Sandy and Jim. I'm really grateful for having them, became effective full-time. I want to say it was like March 28th. I lost a coordinator December 31st and January 7th. So the start of this year was a lot of work. As far as our office goes, the Recreation Division runs a lot of the office duties portion of it because the other two divisions are outside the field. So as you can see, there's a slew list of items there, customers, phone calls, facility, program registrations, all of that stuff comes from, most of it's done inside of our office by the Recreation Division. Our goal is to provide recreational opportunities, improve health and wellness in our community. We currently have a vast array of opportunities available, and we're always searching for new ideas. We encompass aquatics in the recreation because the aquatics part of our department includes a lot of recreational activities. As you can see, there's different, what I did here is I made a list of the types of employees that we have and what it takes for us to operate in a year. And then here's some of their job duties and responsibilities. The recreation coordinators depend on program supervisors to help facilitate and operate programs, along with the program assistants, who those are the second in charge to program supervisors. Program maids, those are the ones that we, a lot of our first time hires, they get through, they actually hold, they're the glue that holds everything together. What exactly do we all do? Again, office attendants, those are the ones who are, we have three part-time ladies that kind of help answer our phones and keep our office functioning while the rest of us are doing our other duties. And the recreation instructors are all of those who teach the individual classes, whether it be a dance class, an art class, a quilting class, et cetera. On the aquatic side, you have the pole managers. There's usually five that we carry throughout the summer. Those are the ones that kind of help maintain and operate the poles, scheduling and such. Lifeguards are those that supervise the poles and make sure that our poles stay safe. The water safety instructors are those who teach the swim lessons. The aquatic aids, again, are the glue to the aquatics portion because they're the ones who have to keep the front of the poles going. They're the ones that have to keep the concession stands running and the close checkers. Just a couple images of some of our classes that we've had over the years. We operate on three seasons. Doesn't always function well with a fiscal year budget, but it's how we operate. So January through May is what we call our winter-spring. The classes or programs that you see listed there only operate during that time of the year. Then we go into summer, which is May through August. You can see that list probably quadrupled. We try to do as much as we can in the summertime, especially with our kids being out of school in the summer. And then our fall season is September through December. Again, fall season is a little bit slower for us. There is a lot of other activities that are going on for children throughout the city that we don't personally take responsibility for. And then we have our year-round programs. These kind of go January through December with very little hitches here and there where they get too much time off. We're always looking for new ideas, as I mentioned. Actually, we just recently hired a new hula instructor and a chess instructor, so those will start in October. And then those are just some other items listed that we would like to eventually, if we can recruit instructors on, it would be great to have. Programming isn't always as easy it looks. You have to find applicants. Recruiting applicants is the hardest part and finding that right person. Then you got to discuss what type of program it is that they're going to want to do, and you got to determine age, cost, supplies, all of that take, comes into consideration, availability of our facility as well as their availability, a hiring process, and then once all that comes together, you actually get to start advertising and promoting a program. Currently, we have 15 youth dance classes and three adult dance classes. We have one instructor, and our classes run anywhere between 15 and 16 weeks. Our fitness and exercise, we have zumba, body shaping, and aerobic workout. Those three run all year round, along with our water fitness program that takes place in the summer. Summer Fun Days has always been one of what I call my babies. It was something I started when I first came here. It's runs, takes place in the summer. Now, six to seven weeks, depending on how many weeks the kids get out. It's $75 a week. All of that there is concluded. I think the one thing that stands us away from a lot of other programs when it comes to a child supervision is that our ratios are 12 to 1. Of course, we do criminal and federal background checks on all of our employees, and when they're gone offsite on trips, we do a 10 to 1. Special events never goes, not unsaid. We have over 20 special events that we do throughout the year. Some of the popular ones that we do is the family camp out. Our dance recitals are huge. They usually have sold-out auditorium full. Drive-in movies, the Summer Carnival, Mud Mania, the Polar Dip, the Route 66 Festival, and now back, Andy Devine Days Parade. So special event planning isn't always that simple either. You got to find a date, and as you know, we, the city does a lot, trying to find a date that doesn't conflict with something else. Pre-event planning, staff schedule, volunteers, organize, setting up, holding the event, take it down, clean up, evaluate, all of that's part of a special event, so there's a lot of time put into them. Special events are usually free or set at a low cost. We do try to do a wide variety for families and children, and we spread them out over the 12-month period. They take all of our department, all of our team members work together, and we use volunteers for some of our bigger events. As far as our department goes, Parks and Recreation is our team. It's the public we serve. What is it? For many, it's their first time job. We listen to citizens and what they want. We try to make it happen. We're specialty classes. We open up fields, tennis courts, and provide access. We book reservations for families, personal business, family reunions, practices. They make memories. And we're customer service, too. Everyone is our customer. On the sports end, we offer sports beginning as young as three years old, all the way up to adults. What we want, what we don't offer, we work with other local nonprofit organizations such as Little League, Kingman Soccer Organization, Raptors Travel Baseball, Rebels Football, KYFL, all of those outside organizations. Sports and leagues, we, again, what we don't offer, someone else does, but pickleball, horseshoes, we do cornhole, basketball, volleyball, both youth and adult. Sports leagues and tournaments, there's a lot that goes into determining what is going to be consisted of for a league or a tournament. You have to do a feasibility study. We talk to all of those that are going to be involved, and then we pick a date and a time, and we start advertising, and then we do a follow-up afterward. Planning, proper execution, you got to get, as I mentioned, buy-in from the leagues, I kind of skipped ahead, I think. And then at the conclusion, publicize finalized championship results, thank the sponsors and players and spectators, and survey your players, coaches, and managers. Adult sports, we have adult basketball, adult volleyball, adult kickball, cornhole, pickleball, and dodgeball. As I mentioned earlier, there's other organizations that use our facilities. While we also have to share with an IGA, we have to use school facilities because we don't have indoor gymnasiums. So with the shared agreement, we swap facilities with some of our schools, and they get filled, tennis courts, golf course, et cetera. You see there, there's a slew long old list there that tells you who uses what and what we use. Pally Christie has been our little asset for a while, but they're now under, doing some internal reservation or renovations inside, so we've kind of put that one on a little hold for a little while. We also offer a lot of sports camps throughout the year in the summer, more specifically. Little Tykes is one of our popular ones. It's four to six years old, and we take 20 to 30 in each group. This past summer, that program was sold out. We also have an agreement with the UK soccer program. They bring in coaches from Great Britain, and they put on a soccer camp, and there's families here that house the traveling coaches that come in for the weeks that they're here. These are just a couple flyers that we had put together for some of our programs. These are just a couple flyers that we had put together for some of our programs and some of our sports. The recreation division works closely with many outside organizations. Again, there's several that we work with. If these leagues, for some reason, could not offer these programs, I don't know how we, as a city, would be able to facilitate it because they depend on a lot of volunteers, and that's one thing we do kind of struggle with, is getting volunteers. We currently have our youth volleyball program that we barely were able to recruit four volunteer coaches for. So, these organizations run on anywhere between 20 to 60 volunteers. It's not rotating. Aquatics. On the aquatics, they also run programs. We offer lifeguard trainings, water safety instructor training, CPR, AED, first aid, bloodborne pathogens, and lifeguard management. There's two aquatic facilities, Centennial and Grandview. Of course, the most important thing, I think, that we offer is our swim lessons. Every summer, swim lessons are sold out. We open Memorial Day and we close mid-August. We're open for 90 days, and we maintain anywhere between 45 and 50 team members to put us through our summer season. Those are some of the special events that, and activities that we do with our aquatics program, the float-in movie, the boat races that Kingman Academy puts on, we host that at Centennial, and then there's a lot of training our lifeguards have to go through. So here, I did a little statistics just to show you what we had prior to COVID and where we're at now. 2019, if you look at Centennial more specifically, Centennial Pool had $53,000 in revenues, and the current year, we had $94,000. If you backtrack and you look at programs, the recreation programs had $168,000 in revenues in 2019, and you look at 2020, and it went down to $62,000. Again, that was a lot to do with COVID, and we lost a lot of that year. 2021, the recreation programs picked back up at 91, and we're currently at 91. But again, when I did this report, this was only to, from January to July 31st. And this is a two-year comparison for recreation revenues. And this is kind of a more detailed on each, as far as our department, I don't want to say department, but what we take into our office, our office revenues, which would include any aquatics, any pool, and any park, or field, or tennis, all of those revenues combined. Again, 2019, we were at 330,000, almost 331. 2020, 210. 2021, back up to 264. And then for the six months, or seven months that we had here, we're 239. So I project by the end of this year that we should, that should be back up by at least another $50,000 or $60,000. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions for Yvonne? Thank you once again for all that information.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Mayor, I want to thank you. I asked for this report, and I think it's really important. Everyone always says there's nothing to do in Kingman. So, I mean, I think you just proved all the ways that people could get involved, get their children involved, adult programs, and I really appreciate all that you guys do in the Parks and Recreation because without Parks and Recreation, you know, what would we have for communities? So, you definitely do good by our community, so I appreciate that. And I, I hope the public learns something tonight about all the vast programs that are available and, and our volunteer opportunities as well.
Yes. In fact, our fall brochure comes out this weekend. It'd be available online September 10th, comes out in the Daily Miner on the 11th, and it'll be available in our office on the 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Yvonne? Yes?
It's really impressive when you see it all listed out. I knew that you guys did a lot, but, oof, I'm tired just looking at it. I just want to thank you guys for all your work. This is what improves quality of life here in Kingman. These are programs I participated in as a kid, there are things that my children are participating in now, so I'm just very thankful for everything and all your hard work. Can you tell us how somebody gets involved to be a volunteer? Where do they go? How do they sign up?
So, what they would do is they'd call our office, and depending on the time of year and where we're looking at for volunteers, more specifically like our youth sports, there's an online application for any youth sports coach. They go in, they can fill it out, and they can express their interest as far as, we as a department do youth volleyball and youth basketball. There's outside organizations that do baseball, softball, soccer, all the rest, football. So, they would come online, fill out a volunteer application, and then they can specifically put on there whether or not they want to coach volleyball or basketball, because it says on there volleyball or basketball. There is other volunteers that we take in some of our other programs. Usually, if they come in and say, "I want to help with one of your special events," I take their name and phone number down, have them fill out an application, and then we place them accordingly. They usually talk to me.
So there's place even if you're not the coach type?
Correct.
And just help out, or?
We just don't have anything set where you come in every week and do X, Y, and Z.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Yvonne, once again, thanks. Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
This is what makes Kingman a much more desirable place, and we talk about livability. This is huge, and so we truly appreciate all that is done by your department.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 7C, Rancho Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing Project Updates. Mr. Foggan.
I thought I'd get fancy and use the microphone down here and have a PowerPoint like everybody else. I guess IT will get that up and running for me. Is that the way I understand it? Yeah, it's happening now. So, as ongoing updates, we're trying to do this every six to two months, six weeks to two months. And so, with that, I wanted to give everybody some insight into where we are on, I, it's actually bottom left, right there. Bring it up for me. Yep. Perfect. And do you want me to set it to? All right. Perfect. All right. So, just a brief overview, we are working on two traffic interchanges. We're working on the Kingman Crossing Traffic Interchange that is basically a partnership with the hospital and a developer at the Kingman Crossing, so that, if anybody who's not familiar, it's right in front of the, what is referred to as generally the new hospital of the Santa Rosa location for KRMC. And then, the Rancho Santa Fe TI, or Traffic Interchange, is up the road, about a mile towards the water tank and the industrial park. And so, I'm just going to share with you where we are with the Kingman Crossing TI. So, the Kingman Crossing TI, AECOM is a really big engineering firm. They have been retained by who we refer to as KX Ventures. KX Ventures is KRMC and the developer, and they are doing the design for the Kingman Crossing TI. The TI is currently at 30% design and has been submitted to ADOT for review. KX Ventures has paid the plan review for that review, done by ADOT, to the tune of just over $100,000. We expect the 30% plans to be accepted by ADOT with comments sometime in September of the, so this month, actually, I was going to say next month, but we're already there. And then, that will continue through the process. Current, currently, AECOM has provided planned completion 100% by the end of April of 2023. Once that is complete, basically, it will be up to KX Ventures to put up the money, and we will go to bid and break ground shortly after that. So, that is our Kingman Crossing TI update. I have been asked, has it been slowed down because of the transition in leadership at KRMC? The answer to that is no. I've actually received confirmation from the board president that KRMC is 100% on-board with this project and are anxious to see it move forward. And the fact that they popped for over $100,000 for the 30% plans kind of shows their commitment as well. I always like it when people talk with their checkbooks because that usually means they're committed, so, good news there. Any questions about Kingman Crossing? All right. Rancho Santa Fe TI, this one, we've been going through land release with the FAA. So, right now, we are in that process. We're about 90% complete. With that, we are still awaiting one report from the FAA with regards to this before we officially submit all the paperwork to go through the public hearing process, and we expect that any day now. And the public input process will take about 60 days. So, we expect that the EEA, the land release for the road, and all the infrastructure associated with the road will be done in November. And that's where we currently are with the land release. And we refer to that as the EEA. It's actually the environmental assessment required by the FAA to release that land for use. The irrevocable letter of credit, that is the developer's side of the funding. They have to provide an irrevocable letter of credit that is tied to this land release. The lenders and the money behind it want to make sure that the land is in, completely in our possession, and we're able to build the road, that it's constructible. I can understand that. So, we will get the, we will get the environmental assessment cleared, and we will then be in the position to wait for irrevocable letter of credit. As far as the rest of the project, we did, as most of you have been hearing about inflation costs. So, ADOT, back in April 1st and part of the second quarter, they were reporting large cost inflators to specifically road projects on average, or maybe not average, but they were seeing cost overruns. So, usually, you have engineering estimates, construction costs come underneath that. Engineers are generally really, really super conservative, right? And so, their estimates are usually here, the cost of the projects here. What we are seeing with this escalation in pricing is that we have engineering estimates here, and they were getting estimates of 31% over the engineering estimates, which is really scary when you've budgeted and you're planning, and of course, the developer and the money behind the developer are afraid of that as well, because it's very hard to eat 31% more than what you've budgeted. Matter of fact, it would almost put this project out of reach for the city. A little cost overrun, you can understand. But what really got our attention was that they had a project come in, 60% over engineering estimate. So, with that, we decided that what the best course of action to have everybody feel a little bit more comfortable about the budget, and developer feel good, and the money behind the developer is what we did, and since we're splitting the cost 50/50 with the developer, minus the $20 million that the state has put up for the TI, we actually reached out to a third-party estimating firm. Their specialty is just estimating, and so, we are waiting for estimates back for what this project, what today, will cost. And that will give us a pretty good gauge on whether we need to sit and wait for a few months, whether we're good to move. As it turns out, the FAA process actually gives us an opportunity to wait anyway. We have to, so, we're waiting for those cost estimates, and we will be sharing those when we get them. So, we paid for the TI and the road infrastructure estimates, and the developer, because they're proposing a very large stormwater capture facility, I think they had originally estimated that to be about $12 million. And you can imagine, if that came in at 31% over $12 million, that's a lot of money. But they're paying for that portion of their project, so we're waiting for those to come in. So, some good news, I don't know, I wasn't able to confirm this today, but I did receive an email and had a conversation with the developer that they were working on the gifting of the property for MCC's advanced manufacturing facility, and I believe that happened last week. So, some good, good news as far as that, because we're anxious, I know that we, I've met with MCC first of last week when they were expecting the gift, the land gift, and that they're talking about moving their welding program to the advanced manufacturing facility as well. So, that's, I think, great news for residents and people that are wanting to be able to get those advanced manufacturing skills. So, that's my Rancho Santa Fe update. Any questions?
Okay. I think, barring that, we don't have any questions? You have one? Yes, counselor.
The infrastructure grant that we had discussed applying for?
Yep.
Have we applied for that? And when are those awarded? When would we know if that was successful?
Actually, we've applied, and not exactly sure what their actual turnaround times are for those because they're, they're open till completed, and so, I've not received a date for when we expect to hear from that. We have been pretty diligent about gathering support letters. Monica, who's our grant administrator, has done a great job working with Rob and his team, and Phil and, and his team as well, to make sure that we, you know, and that's, you know, that precautionary, if you can, if we can get some of that grant money that's been made available through the federal efforts, then we probably should try, and that's where that came from.
Was there a specific dollar amount that we had to apply for, or we just submitted the whole project?
That's a good question, Tina. Do you remember what, how much we applied for? Jack?
It's not the whole.
It's not the whole project.
So, it would just take some of that burden off?
Do you remember what it was? The bridges? Yeah, well, yeah, so, we've been targeting the TI itself, so, yeah, I don't have that total.
Okay. All right.
It shaves off some of that. Obviously, not 20 million that the state is putting up, so, something less than that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Foggan? Okay. Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And are you staying up here for 7D?
All right, well, it's the next slide.
I hear that. Okay, Proposition 415, Community Education Efforts.
Yep. And so, just as a reminder to the council and the public, the, once the council places this on the ballot for the November election, all I, as long, as well as my team can do, is provide facts. So, what we've been doing is doing our best to compile and put out the facts on Prop 413 so people can make their decision for or against. So, one of the things I wanted to share with the council is what we've, what we've done to kind of get that information out to the community. So, the first thing that we did is we, we met as a team, and we created a double-sided fact sheet, and that sat on our counters, as well as went to several chamber events. I know that some of the council members had picked those up and were sharing those around, which we appreciated. I know when they were sitting on the counters that they got picked up. I had a meeting with a resident that came in with the sheet and thanked me for the information, so, people did, did use those for gathering information. We've also got an educational video that was created, and all of these things were put on a website. So, we created our webpage under our city website, right? And so, we've got all the facts, frequently asked questions, we've got the videos, we've also got the presentations that were made to the council when the council was deciding on this, that are part of that, just basically took the meeting section and put it specifically on this page. And then, finally, we've developed this H, eight booklet, it should say eight-page booklet that's available. We have them on all our counters, there's a QR code on the back. We have them on all our counters, there's a QR code on the back where it takes you directly to the webpage if, if there's something, facts we haven't caught in here, which I think we have, but anybody that has a smartphone can go directly to that QR code. And then what we're currently working on is we're right now finalizing a PowerPoint presentation that any, any team member or council member that wants to present at any function, you're welcome to take that PowerPoint. It should be finished, I want to say by Thursday. And so that's just the, the fact's PowerPoint. We are, I'm currently scheduled to speak at several community group events with Counselor Samley. Thank you, Counselor. And then we are proposing to hold two community open house meetings to share the facts, just basically go over the PowerPoint. So both of those meetings, while there was one, going to be on September 20th, but there's other things happening. So we're going to do a presentation October 4th and then October 18th, 4:00 in this, in the council chambers. It's going to be before council meeting, so we'll go 4:00 to 4:45. And the first one, we will record and put it on the web, the webpage along with the other material that is, that is there. Although I don't, I, I want people to attend, it will be the facts and the facts only. So that is what we've currently up to today have, have been working on. So just wanted everybody to have their hand on the booklet, know that they are available, and if you feel like you want to pass them out, great. Again, I think that does a good job of prevent, presenting the facts, answering some questions, and leaves the decision to the voters as is required, so. Questions?
Ron, I appreciate the report on that. I know I was actually talking to one of our automobile dealership owners, and at first, I hadn't got a chance to explain the whole program, and I was, as I was explaining it, I could see he was being a little bit, he was not quite in favor, a little bit negative. But when I, especially, and what I like about this, and when it was suggested by, I'm not sure which one of you ladies presented this, but the large ticket item, that made a difference and he was on board after that. So it's critical that we get this information out and explain it to people.
The facts and the frequently asked questions are, are really important, and if, I think if people spend a few minutes going through, I mean, there's a great video, if you don't want to practice your literacy, there's a great video that, that Colleen Haynes put together that, that goes basically through this on, on the website as well. So it's, if you don't feel like reading, there's a video for it.
Once again, thank you for the reports, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, moving on to item 8, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Ron, you should, you could have, when that you want?
I want to use, yeah, I want to use this microphone. No. So I just want to remind everybody that the Andy Devine Days Parade is September 24th, that's Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and it is of course going to be in its traditional route downtown, starting back by Locomotive Park, and encourage everybody to, to come out and it'd be great if anybody wanted to participate. We could use some more entries into the parade as well, so if you want to show off that decorated bike or you got a horse you want to show off, come on and get registered with Yvonne and her team, right? She just, she just talked about all the stuff that they do and they're helping, or they are putting on Andy Devine Parade, so. And then of course, we've already talked about this, but I need a bookmark for everybody, September 20th, 6 to 8, Arizona Department of Water Resources is coming to take public comment on an irrigation non-expansion area. And so would love to have community members come out and, and support this because that's really what this public hearing is about, is, is there enough support for the director, I don't want to say cover, but enough community support to get an INA in place. And so that, again, September 20th, 8, 6 to 8 in Mojave County Supervisor's Auditorium. And that is all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Councilwoman Samley.
I do have a few things. So thanks to you, Mayor, I was able to represent the city of Kingman at the Nucor expansion where they're investing $100 million in our area. Got to speak to those folks and thank them for their investment in our community and what it's going to do in, in the future. I also got to represent the city at the Walmart remodel, re-grand opening and all the things that they were doing there, so I appreciate the invite. It was well-attended and they also have a significant investment in our community and one of the busiest stores in and around the state. So I was, I was grateful to represent the city, thank you. I attended the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference last week. I went to everything that they had on water because water is, is an issue and it's not going to go away anytime soon, so I want to learn as much about water. Got to network with legislators at the, at the state level, also got to network with other city council members and mayors from around the state, so grateful for the city to send me. It was very informative, so thank you. I think that's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Sealy.
I really, I don't have much. I also attended the league and sat in on the water meetings as well. It's a very complex problem that we are going to be working on, I think, for a long time and need everyone's support in that. That's all I, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Mello.
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you. A couple of different things. I also was able to attend the league conference and once again, water was, is, seemed to be the, the main subject on everything and critical. And I appreciate all that I took, was able to learn and take away from that and water's so critical to our area, and so I appreciate the emphasis that we are putting on it. And of course, once again, as Manager Foggan, invite everybody to that September 20th meeting at the council chambers for the county. And then also, I was able to attend Parks, Recreation, and Golf Course. Mike, is that, did I get it right, commission? And talk about Yvonne's report, it was a little bit long today, that report was very long, but that was very informative and once again, it makes me appreciate all the different activities that we have here in Kingman and all the good people that work for us and so, and work for the city, and we appreciate all that's done. Then also, a couple of weeks ago, I was able to attend the Municipal Utilities Commission, and that brings up the fact, the point that as all our commissions, and I keep, I continue to mention this, it's all volunteer, and I just truly appreciate all those who are willing to serve on those commissions. And so likewise, I continue to invite, invite us as council members to be sure to attend our commissions that we are assigned to and show the support to those people and thank them too. And then this Saturday is a fun event, the Special Olympics. Our chapter here in Kingman is having a softball game against, they are playing the Lake Havasu Chapter, I think, and that's at 9:00 at Centennial Park. And they've asked me to throw out the first pitch, so that should be very interesting. So I would invite everybody to go to that and, and support our Special Olympians. And that's all I have for tonight, and once again, I appreciate that I live in a great city like Kingman. Council requests for future reports and updates. Item 9. Yes, Counselor.
After hearing the call to the public on the dog attack, this is the second dog attack that has come before this council. It seems to be a problem that's getting worse. I personally had some issues with dogs at large, dangerous aggressive dogs, and nothing was done about it. So I am asking not just for a report, but for steps the council can take to have stricter punishment, stricter policies, and to better enforce the problems that we have with these aggressive dogs attacking people and running loose. So I'm asking for solutions, not a list of what we can't do.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, counselors?
No, nothing for me.
Okay. Hearing none, I would tender a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
So moved. We are adjourned. Once again, thanks to everybody for being here tonight.